You're listening to The Ground Down, a podcast where we sit down with industry leaders and experts to discuss issues that affect the civil engineering industry. This podcast is brought to you by E H R A Engineering. Welcome. We hope that you enjoy the show.
Welcome to another episode of E H R A Engineering's podcast series, The Ground Down. My name is Jim Ross. I'm with E H R A Engineering and welcome my colleague and associate Savaji Sinipathy, who is the leader of E H R A's Engineering Traffic and Transportation Practice. So today, we welcome Fort Bend County Commissioner, Precinct Two Commissioner Grady Prestige, and also Fort Bend County Precinct Three Commissioner Andy Myers. So thank you both gentlemen for joining us today. How have each of y'all been faring since March when the COVID-19 pandemic became a national crisis and all of a sudden, all the states and the counties and the cities and all that started shutting down? So Commissioner Myers, go ahead and start with you.
Well, actually, nothing slowed down in my precinct. I was very surprised, to be blunt about it. My staff stayed home for a very short period of time and we all came back to the office because there was so much going on out here. A number of our subdivisions out here, you know, having record year. I'm not sure what's going on, but that's one of the things. I mean, they come to me and say, you know, where any land is? We have builders who want lots and we need to buy land that we can build on and contact your local broker and have him take you to where there's available land. I mean, there's a lot of land in other areas of this region. There's more, I see more and more activity occurring north of us and, you know, the Katy portion of Harris County. And the traffic is moving out actually to even to Water County now. So we see a lot of activity going on on basically the west side of Houston. It just continues to blossom out here, which is one of the reasons we have needs for mobility. I know the text I was talking about, starting the improvement of 10. That's going to stimulate even more growth out here as people figure out or think that they can get into town a lot quicker if 10 has improved. You know, we're making some additional improvements. As you well know, we have already started the process of building the Heritage Parkway, which is going to connect 1093 to Interstate 10. And that is going to, you know, facilitate a whole lot more development out here. So it just continues to roll on. I've been pleasantly surprised that things have gone as well as they have in here.
Commissioner Prestige, how about you?
Well, Andy is correct. Business goes on. There were modifications that people had to make in their lifestyles, yes. But I found that the marketplace didn't really miss a beat. What got more activity than before was the reliance of the people on certain governmental services. Because when you had people to lose their jobs, either permanently or furloughed, you know, and they were self-sufficient, didn't need anything, didn't access some of the social services that are available, all of a sudden you have people looking and wanting and needing. And I'm pleased with the response. You know, the government responded, yes, but the nonprofit sector and the churches, and they all responded well, food banks and, you know. So we got sucked into that a lot, I mean, because people turned to us for guidance and assistance and inspiration. And so that made our job a little different than the project work we had been doing, more like social workers. And that's what the people needed. On a personal standpoint, when we started working from home and just only occasionally come to the office, I found that how difficult it was for years to have regular staff meetings. Everybody's always got something going on, this meeting here, this meeting there, something going on. But you work from home, I got you, I got you now, you can't get away. So we started having daily video staff meetings. And the internal communications is amazing. You know, you got an hour, hour fifteen, twenty minutes every weekday, a captive audience, and we getting things done, there's more communications. It's been great, it's been great for a team building exercise. On a personal note, when it comes to COVID, I got personally infected because I got COVID in June. And so I pretty much lost a month of my life, you know, from time, you know, I was probably picked it up to recover, to getting my confidence and to get back out again. I mean, fortunately, I had a fairly easy recovery at home. But, you know, it definitely affected me, my psyche a lot and made me look gun-shy. And for a person who's always shaking hands and hugging and had to make that lifestyle change to be a little more standoffish and communicate so much more via these devices than I was accustomed to. So I had to make some personal adjustments. I was personally affected by this crisis that started in March. But professionally, it's been, you know, I echo Commissioner Myers, we're busier than ever doing something for the people.
You know, as I've said before, in over thirty years that I've been in business, I know you guys have been doing this much longer than I have, but I say that my business playbook ended at economic recession and there was no chapter for national pandemic. So this is one of these things where all of us, you know, this was something none of us have ever been through and we all just did the best, just all did the best we could. So with that, you know, just an adder to this question, you know, looking back now, you know, as I say, we're living different with COVID-19 in October than we, of 2020 than we were in March of 2020. We'll be living with it differently in January 21 than we are in October of 2020. What would y'all do differently now that you know what you know?
You know what, I think, let me take this one first, Commissioner. I think we did, I think this country, I think the world responded pretty much like I anticipated response to be. In this country, we're so used to so many personal liberties that we can go anywhere we want to go, do whatever we want to do, as long as it doesn't hurt anybody. And so in some more authoritarian countries where they can make you do this and demand that you do this, that, i.e. China, North Korea, you know, they can make you do stuff, you know, their response was different, their outcome was different. I knew it was going to be tough to battle the personal freedoms that we all enjoy with was good for the greater good of all of us. And, but we, I think we, we're making it through. And sometimes we have to learn the hard way. You know, we have to go out and party on Memorial Day weekend and, you know, and just deal with the consequences. But as you say, Jim, this was never scripted out, never scripted out. But moving forward, it will, okay? If there's ever another pandemic, we'll know how to deal with it. I guess it's been a hundred years since we had one. So, and I imagine that if you talk to somebody in eighteen, I mean nineteen, twenty about the Spanish flu, they'd probably answer the same way. You know, we had too many personal liberties, it was hard to get everybody to get on board and act a certain way, but we made it through.
Well, I, you know, looking back, my, I haven't had any personal experience like Commissioner Prestige has, and I'm very happy he came through it quite well. And I had some friends, obviously, didn't make it. One of the things that, you know, and we're kind of looking at in hindsight here, we began to understand that, you know, the virus really didn't attack everybody equally. It kind of discriminated against guys my age, you know, people in their sixties, seventies and older were the most vulnerable and particularly those that had com mobility problems, you know, they had a heart problem or diabetes or had compromised immune systems from cancer treatment or things of this nature were really susceptible. And I particularly was very concerned because I have two, my wife and my daughter both have compromised immune systems from the illnesses that they have. So I was very cautious about bringing it home to them because it was clear to me that neither one of those, neither one would survive it if I brought it home to them. So I was, I started out wearing gloves and masks and goggles. I transitioned into wearing mask and I always wear the mask when I go out and try to be very careful about being in too many crowds. But I, you know, I do all the family shopping, you know, and going to the drugstore, et cetera. So I try to be very careful when I'm out and about. And when I bring stuff into the house, I, you know, I try to make sure that I disinfect it to the extent I can, you know, wash everything, wash my hands, et cetera. So I think we, you know, we've kind of, in hindsight, learned that we have a very vulnerable segment of our population that we need to isolate, protect very closely. We have a very large group that the great majority of the people who really, even if they catch it, they have almost no symptoms. There's so many people that I know that tested positive and said, gee, I didn't even know I was sick. Others had a mild case that really, other than kind of knocking them down for a couple of days, it really didn't hurt them that badly. So I think that, you know, we come up with a program of protecting the vulnerable, isolating those that are sick and more or less let most other people get on with their normal lives. As Grady points out, this country has a significant amount of individual rights and individual freedoms that we really don't want to infringe on, which, as he points out, makes it very tough to control the type of virus that is contagious that this is. Now, y'all aren't old enough to remember you were around back in nineteen sixty-eight and sixty-nine, whenever we had the Hong Kong flu that was about as devastating as this one is. A lot of people caught it, it didn't discriminate, you know, it, you know, all ages basically died from that particular flu. And there was some concern, I had a baby boy at that time, I was born in sixty-eight. And we were, I was concerned that somebody his age, he hasn't really developed all the immunities and was concerned about that. So it wasn't the level of concern we have now, but I still remember back in those days that you didn't want to catch a Hong Kong flu either. So there's been somewhat similar pandemics that we've had in the past, we've handled them a little differently than we handle this one. And I think Grady's correct, we're going to learn from this one and figure out how we're going to deal with the next pandemic and there will be a next one, hopefully not next year.
Let me take the next question here. Obviously, you know, just because of the COVID, we are kind of living in a virtual world, all of us, kind of Bluetooth chairs and computers. So the question is, you know, we've been hearing some of the ISDs, they're going virtually completely and some of them kind of going back to school, they have different, I guess, they are dealing with this COVID situation. So the question here is, what kind of measures county has been taken so far, are taking in the future to make sure every person in the county has a broadband access? Because learning is important, of course, the business as usual is important, the broadband is kind of the source for everything, essentially source for us.
I actually have been to a number of conferences over the last ten years where that was one of the topics. And when I go away to conferences, I come back with some for my staff to do and work on some new initiative. And there have been a number of occasions where I came back with the notion of having the entire county wired. Okay, well, reality kind of sets in and, you know, it's like, okay, well, maybe a part of the county, you know, but that's a major task. But the way technology is evolving, by the time you put something in place, it's obsolete. And unless you're in that business, you run the risk of making an expensive purchase for a product that's a dud as soon as it gets up and going. So my plan now is to stand on silent as and cheer them on, y'all go get them. Because I can't see how we could do it on a major scale, okay? Definitely without significant partnerships with all the tax communities in the county and significant participation from the private sector to do that, to do that. And also, you can't lose sight of the fact that our county is, you know, predominantly a middle-class, upper-middle-class population. And they have already, okay, they have it already. And that may be focused on populations that are not as fluent, are not quite capable, you know, and as a way of making it broad-based. Okay, so that's a tough thing to deal with. And, but I can, I would suspect that those who work on social media or using devices that need to broadband, you know, if they're going to function, you know, properly, they're probably on it now, okay? I never heard of Zoom before this stuff started, you know, Zoom and WebEx and Teams and, you know, yeah. So it's a great time to be around and have those type of technological tools at our disposal.
I agree with Grady, at one point, you know, the technology is changing so rapidly. I mean, we now have the private sector that's launching all kinds of satellites and they're going to cover, you know, they're going to cover all the geosynchronous orbit with satellites that are going to allow you to connect the whole world together at some point in time. And I think that to try to hardwire something now that's very expensive, I think Grady's correct, it'll be obsolete by the time we get it finished. So, you know, my idea is to simply kind of wait and let the technology evolve. I think it'll sort itself out, you'll find a lot of people that perhaps, a number of people that perhaps need some assistance to be able to connect, but you'll have the ability to connect to a satellite system in a not-too-distant future, you don't have to hardwire a whole bunch of stuff. And I think that's coming, and at least that seems to be the plan. So my deal is, I don't think the county government has enough funding to help fund something of that nature, that's something that's going to well beyond our ability to fund. I keep reminding people, we only collect about sixty, seventy-five dollars a month from the tip of a house, that's about what you pay for your cellphone, one cellphone. That's the taxes we collect, so it's difficult to fund a whole lot with a tax level at that level.
My next question is, obviously, in our earlier discussion, both commissioners, you mentioned, you know, your regions did pretty well with the COVID, maybe surprisingly to some extent. I think some of the credit goes to your longstanding leadership. You've been there, I mean, you're there for twenty-four to thirty years combined experience of, we're talking of sixty-four years. I think that takes some, I think, there's some value in it. I think that some of the credit goes to both of you. You both are the longstanding commissioners on the Fort Bend County. The next question would be, in those lines, you know, having served for such an extended period of time, you definitely, you know, you both contributed significantly to the growth of the county. So how you describe the evolution, our evolution of the county from like rural to suburban to urban? And also, what type of challenges? I'm sure it's not an easy ride, obviously, so there must be some challenges and accomplishments that you are proudest of.
Grady's a senior on this thing, he has more experience than I do with the deal. You know, I think one of the things I could say is that our commissioners' court over the twenty-four years that I've been on the court has worked very well together. We really have. You know, there have been times when we've not totally agreed on a few things, but I think on the important things, you know, counties are in the business of basically building roads, maintaining roads, funding the justice system, things of this nature, kind of the, I guess, the basics. And we have, we have delivered the basics to the people at a very effective cost to them. I like to brag about the fact that of all the level of governments, county government provides you the best value for your dollar with regard to the services you receive. And you can make that measure almost any way you want to. But the reality is, if you're only paying, a household is only paying sixty to seventy-five dollars a month and they get all the services that the county provides, that's an extraordinary bargain for them. And the county has more or less, you know, kind of stood out of the way of development. We've been quite development-friendly. There's still, obviously, one of the reasons a lot of developers come to Fort Bend County is because, you know, they find doing business here very amenable to them, very profitable to them. And we have outstanding schools, which neither Commissioner Prestige nor I have anything to do with, frankly, but at the same time, facilitating a community that attracts those types of people that are basically more family-oriented, that are focused on making certain their kids get a good education, emphasizing that good schools are something that's important to them. As a consequence, we have good schools. So I've seen the county grow from, I moved here in nineteen sixty-seven, so that's now forty-three years ago that I moved to Fort Bend County. It was a little bitty, almost a rural county at that time. We moved in the very first master planned subdivision that Fort Bend County had, it wasn't very big, and that's Sugar Creek. And then, obviously, things exploded from there and we've seen an extraordinary amount of growth. I think when I moved here, we had a population of about around ninety thousand, now it's almost ten times that amount. So we've seen a tremendous amount of growth and it's been, I think, for the most part, good favorable growth. You know, we have our challenges still, mobility is still one of the biggest challenges that we have, a lot of which the county can't do anything about because most of the congestion is on state highways. And we continue to look to the state to provide things. You know, Grady's in a neat position on the Transportation Commission, the H C A C's transportation that can influence, you know, us to some extent where we focus on our efforts to provide mobility congestion relief. But the problem is, the whole region needs congestion relief. So it's always a challenge that we face and Texas out faces, the cities face, to meet the growing demands that we have. This area, this state is going to continue to have an influx of people moving into it. It's an attractive place to live, raise your family, work. So a lot of benefits that people look for. So we just need to make certain we prepare, continue to prepare for the future. And I think that Fort Bend County has led the state, frankly, in some of the innovative things that we've done. We were the second county to create a county-only toll road authority after Harris County. There was a multiple county toll road authority in North Texas, but Harris was the first one to create one for Harris County, Fort Bend was the second one to create one for Fort Bend County, and I think that was somewhat forward-looking. We took the lead in creating county assistant districts, that's certainly helped my region quite a bit, mainly because it's so, you know, such a large areas of it is unincorporated and that's the only areas that you can create a county assistant district that has helped us build roads. The 1093 project, for example, was funded from a county standpoint solely from the sales taxes that we're getting from our county assistant district. We've added more law enforcement on our streets and the other members of the court are beginning to use their sales tax revenue. Grady has got a couple of projects that he's got going. Fort Bend County was the very first county that did that. In fact, we're still one of the very few counties that have utilized that particular funding source to provide more services to people without raising their property taxes.
Yeah, and Andy is kind of modest. Andy is the godfather of county assistance districts in the state of Texas. So hail to the godfather, you know. When that, the whole notion of doing that first came up, you know, I didn't pay attention to it at all, I was fighting other battles. So I found out that this is some real money they're generating, they can do real things. So I was actually late to the game, but I credit Commissioner Myers for championing that law and the revisions to the law over the years to make it more user-friendly for counties like ours. We've maintained great relationships, as Commissioner said, on commissioners' court. You know, I'm on my fifth county judge and there have probably been more county judges than I've had changes of commissioners at that time, you know. And so we usually get things done. And one of the reasons I think is that our lack of ordinance-making powers. You know, cities have, you know, have ordinance-making powers, they can make laws, they can do things, and they have land use control. And when you exercise those rights, those privileges, as you govern, you're going to tick somebody off, okay? Okay, if you tell someone you can't do this with your land and it's your land, you know, that's not going to be a happy camper, okay? And if you can make laws to restrict people's behavior, you're going to make somebody unhappy. We've got the classic cop-out answer, we don't do that, we can't do that. So we get to avoid a whole lot of contentious situations, okay? And it makes, to me, governing easy, you know, we can focus on things that people care about. I mean, both the basic stuff that we are statutorily required to do and the frills that we get into, like parks and libraries and EMS and those kinds of things, social services, things that are not required of us, but we do it because citizens want it. And so as far as development goes, I still think that it's the marketplace, okay? If you have developers who show up and they find large tracts of land and single ownership that's easy to assemble and you have these wonderful laws, rules on creating municipal utility districts, which is a developer's dream, okay? You can create a political subdivision and you can, you can make this infrastructure happen and you can, you can add value to a land, sell it, move on, and get reimbursed for a lot of the public infrastructure. It's like, it's a perfect storm for a developer. And so we grew one planned community at a time. And it happened and it's still happening because there's still large tracts of land that are undeveloped. And the marketplace is going to find it, they're going to, they're going to develop it and people are going to come. Our job is to, I mean, first do no harm, okay? Just get out of their way, let them do it, don't put anything restriction, restrictions on them. No, we can't just let them run wild. And there's some things that we need to have done, there are affairs that need to be, you know, provided for, sometimes at their expense, because they're, you know, causing it to not have adequate capacity with the development they do. But not to not to overreach, just to say, okay, let's let's do this. Let's make your money. We'll get out of your way. We'll help you. And and we'll just stand on the side and take credit for it. Okay, but it's 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 the individual developer who takes a chance and and rolls the dice to try to make something happen that's made this county grow over these years, and and that's that's the game plan moving forward. I just imagine that that it's it's our responsibility to help them or just get out of the way and do no harm. That that's 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 been a story of the county's rapid growth as far as I'm concerned. It's 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 in planned communities like this Sugar Creek, like Coyle Valley, some of the early ones, like Willer Ridge, which is the park that's in the city of Houston. Mission Bend was a big planned community. Not to mention, you know, the first colonies, Sugar Mills, the Cinco Ranch, you know, Greatwood, River Park, you know, all all those developments that came along and and made for a great quality of life for for this county. Meadows, you know, was was a planned community there. So it's hard for us to take credit for that. It it was the the aggressive, creative, forward thinking developers that that made those things happen.
We've we've likely all heard that the demographics and social sociologist expert Dr. Stephen Kleinberg share his thoughts and data related to our region. Dr. Kleinberg frequently talks about the power of an early education and the paramount importance of education through the third grade. He endorses the fundamental need to build a foundation for learning and for leveling the playing field among students in early education. Fort Ben County is known and has been known not only for good but great school districts, and the county is also one of the most diverse counties in the United States. How do you both feel the power of excellent education or excellent educational resources across the board for all demographics, from early education to the access your county has now to universities and colleges, factors into the growth and evolution of Fort Ben County? So, you know, Fort Ben County, as I've said, has got a just, it's a, it's a, it's a tremendous resource because not only does it have great school districts, but it's also got just an exceptional option of 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 continuing education. How does all that wrap into the growth and evolution of the county?
Well, first of all, I'll say, and this is a a a a statement I make all the time, and 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 I'm gonna say it the way I I mean it. School business is hard. The school business is very, very difficult. And and if, and 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 so while we have a reputation for good schools, there are a lot of schools within those systems that aren't doing so well. And and we have to be forward thinking enough to realize that we gotta average everybody up or they become an anchor and drag everybody down. But that is hard to do. It's very hard to do. You know, i- i- if you build new communities, which means you'll get new schools, you'll have a number of things. You'll have brand new homeowners who are very enthusiastic, and they're gonna be engaged in things with their families. You're gonna have and more than likely young kids, and 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 you have, the parents are more involved with younger kids than they do when they get older, and you're gonna have great outcomes. And 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 especially if you add the socioeconomic factor there, though, a lot of those communities are very affluent, families who have the resources, who have the, have, who are educated already and know and understand the value of it. And and so you can have great outcomes there. The challenging part is, what happens in those other areas? The areas that were developed in the sixties and seventies and eighties that that are on their fourth and fifth, sixth generation of of homeowners there. And a lot of times they're renters. A lot of times they're people who 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 want a good education for their their children but don't have the resource to help augment what a good education what it entails. That's that's hard. That's hard. It's hard. And 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 it's not a one size fits all situation. It's not. So school districts are gonna have to wrestle with this. I mean, it's it's nothing new. It happens all over the country. Okay, so that that's tough. School business is hard. It's very hard. And 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 I really don't envy what they what they they have to do. It is so tough. And so there there are things that are structural that need to be changed. I think our dependence on standardized tests is probably not doing us any good. Our, I'll continue to use the model from an agrarian society where you go to school, you know, and then on summer, you're off, you know, that stands for you know, families helping bring in the crops, you know, and, you know, I don't see any reason why we can't do this year round. And I think you get a better product, you know, you 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 don't have that drop off over the summer where kids kind of check out and have to take weeks or months to get back in the swing of things when you go back to school. There are a lot of things that need to be done differently, including putting resources in areas that really need it. Okay, and and realize that it's not a one size fits all. There are special situations, and that up to third grade, that's a critical time. You know, early childhood stuff, you know, when you get that, give them a foundation, it works out well. How does the county plan that? We don't. And so so my response on that, this is Brady's response on that is, let's do what we can do. Okay, let let us continue to provide bricks and mortar. We can build buildings. We can do it well. We can build parks and community centers with the best of them, libraries and those kind of things. The 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 programming is the hard part. The instruction, the guidance, you know, and and we need to partner, continue to partner with others to help us do that part of the deal. And so, you know, I I've been involved in a lot of community centers and and products. I think it it just, you know, it's it's good that you have that facility available to help facilitate good things happen. Extracurricular activities are sometimes the the carrot that brings, you know, a a kid, you know, to an environment where they can learn. I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, when with sports, sometimes they they drop out of school. I mean, or or or, in the case of the Boys and Girls Clubs that we have, it's a place where kids can come after school and have a safe environment. And and it's not about playing basketball or shooting pool all the time. There there are libraries and computer labs and all kinds of arts and craft things and things that are good for them, and they 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 get engaged with those kids and and make sure they do their homework and those kinds of things. So those are kind of things that that the county can can play a role in. But school business is hard, and the school business is the foundation of this whole thing. You're not gonna sell any houses if you have bad schools.
And and that's what, and that's what developers first and foremost question is, or 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 in, you know, investigation or due diligence and whatnot, as they as they approach new regions and new areas to develop single family residential developments is school districts. So that that isn't, that is important. So Commissioner Myers, what are your thoughts on 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 the school and 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 the evolution, school districts and schools and education and and evolution of the county?
Well, I'll tell you a personal story. We, I lived in Westbury when my youngest, my my oldest, excuse me, started school, and he was struggling in school, and when I I discovered that his teacher, and he's in the first grade, his teacher, English was not her first language. She was, you know, a foreigner. Wasn't Hispanic, but and had difficulty communicating with him. And as a result, we decided to start looking for areas that had better school district, well, had a school district that I, you know, we thought would be best for our 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 kids. I had two children at that time, a boy and a girl. My youngest hasn't arrived yet, but we started looking around. We looked all over the the two areas that had at that time, and this is in in seventy, the mid seventies. So at that time, we started looking at the Spring area, which actually, back in those days, had a pretty good school district. We looked at Spring Branch, actually, in those days, in the in the mid seventies, had a pretty good school districts. And Fort Ben at that time also had a pretty good school district. We looked at Katy. Katy did not measure up at that point in time to those other areas, and this is in the mid seventies. And what, so we moved to Fort Ben and moved into Fort Ben ISD. What happened over time is that you had the big development of the energy industry along Highway Six about that time, and so you had all these families beginning to to, you know, highly educated professionals, highly motivated. They had kids, and they were started looking for areas to move to. They didn't particularly like Houston Independent School District, so they moved to the Katy area, that that was fairly close to their work. And as a consequence, you had Katy went from what was, back in those days, kind of a considered something of a rule school district, a fairly small one at that time, to, you know, beginning to to boom and and having exemplary schools and suddenly became a magnet, if you would, for our development because it it developed a very good reputation for their for their schools. And my my baby girl, my youngest, has been a teacher in the Katy Independent School District now for almost twenty years. So she's in the middle of all that. You know, she's used to teach the third grade, now she teaches the fourth grade, so she's an elementary school teacher and and, you know, and a very important factor in in the development of a lot of those kids' lives. And she obviously is a, loves her her work and her job, and she's very good at it, as as is most of the teachers that that we have. I I really don't hear a lot of complaints about teachers in general in in any of the school districts out here. Brady's correct. You know, we have an area, a segment of our of our county that needs a little help, and and we need to do what we can to assist them. Obviously, the county's not in the education business. I don't want to get in that business. Being a county commissioner is tough enough. I don't want to try to be a school superintendent. But I think that there are things that that we can do to help encourage that, and 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 particularly continue to provide you know, a framework, a quality of development. We want to continue to encourage quality development in in this area. We want to try to see if we can get revitalization of some of the older areas, and not just kind of let them fall apart, but you know, try to see if we can help stimulate through some types of of tax advantage terrors, things of this nature, and some of those areas to try to help revitalize some of those areas. We've got some, Fort Ben County is probably the most diverse county in the United States, population wise. A a large segment of our imminent immigrant community are very education oriented. Education is a very top priority for them, and and they, and they, a lot of them moved to Fort Ben County because of the reputation that our schools, the various schools have. And when they come in, they tend to dominate. You know, the the, I I guess, the the top of the school ranking in each of their schools. So that's a, that's a positive thing, I think, bringing, having them come in and and begin to set a standard that everybody else tries to reach to is tends to stimulate even more of that. So the school districts have played, in my opinion, the key role in the development of this particular area of of Fort Ben County, you know, the north part of Fort Ben County in particular. And one of the reasons that the north part of Fort Ben County has has been the fastest growing portion of Fort Ben County for the last fifteen years, in my opinion, is as a result of not just Katy Independent School District schools, but we have a a couple of, a few of the Fort Ben I I S D schools here. And we have Lamar that is is the area that is west of of Katy that has, they just opened a new high school, Folscher High School and a junior high school out there. And so and those two schools have the same type of exemplary reputation that a lot of the the Cinco Ranch highs and et cetera have in this area. So I think that's gonna continue, and as a result, you're gonna have one of the reasons you're gonna have continued growth in this area out here is people, families are looking for places to raise their kids and have, be able to send them to a quality education. But we need a quality education for everybody, and we need to work toward that goal.
I can see that nationally, the Fort Ben County has been recognized very well with the independent schools. I mean, my son just graduated from Fort Ben, Velcas of KTISD. I mean, I being a parent of KTISD, I can see how well they are recognized nationally. I mean, they definitely gained a national recognition, these schools. So the next question, you know, the the recent years, you know, there's a lot of talk about resilience, sustainability, and, you know, we, those are like buzzwords the last few years. But this year we hear a lot about equity, infrastructure equity. I mean, there's there's a a lot of attention given to infrastructure equity in the industry. So question is, do you see a balance? Could you please share your perspective on infrastructure equity in Fort Ben County? I just also want to share you, if you can share your thoughts on how the twenty twenty mobility bond will reshape infrastructure equity.
The twenty twenty bond issue for mobility, this is, I forget which one we have. Brady, we started what in twenty, two thousand?
Two thousand one, two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen, seventeen, and twenty. So it's five. This is the fifth one.
Okay, so about every three years, we we've had one. And and that kind of, two things, it it fits our our needs, but it also fits our budget. We have to be able to fund this and fund the debt, and we work very closely with our auditor and our budget officer and 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 our outside financial consultants and making certain that we come up with a program that we can actually afford, that we can fund. And particularly at a time like this, wherever, you know, the economy is still struggling a little bit, Fort Ben County actually is doing its part to help stimulate some of the economy through having a capital program of the nature we have, that obviously, you know, puts people to work. It gives work to engineering firms. It gives work to construction firms. It it accommodates commerce. And so it's a very important issue for us. Being stuck in a in a traffic jam for an hour in the morning and an hour in the evening is a quality of life issue, and we want to make certain we we do our part to try to provide a a good quality of life for our residents. And and, you know, we understand very clearly that getting stuck in a traffic jam is not a lot of fun. I I I have some of my own constituents that are not very happy with me because Kane Island, after the the Buc-E's went in, Kane Island became a parking lot almost. Kane Island is a connection from ten, fourteen sixty three to I ten. I needed a second connection because I only had one connection from that area to Interstate Ten, and that was fourteen sixty three itself. So Kane Island Parkway became an alternative. Well, Katy puts Buc-E's in, and Buc-E's generates an extraordinary amount of traffic, you know, traffic volume, and as a consequence, the, you know, it backed up that two lane bridge that the CD Katy and developer built, and that's what we connected our road to. And the traffic congestion just overwhelmed the amount of traffic that we had there. So had a lot of my constituents are very unhappy with me, and they let me know it by telling me that they're gonna vote for my opponent since we did a poor job of only building a two lane road, and tried to explain to them that the county doesn't build all the roads, you know. The state builds most of them, the city builds some of them, the county builds others, and the developers build most of the roads is an education we're gonna have to continue to get our people through. But the bond issue is critical. If we're gonna maintain the quality of growth and the pace of growth we've had in this county over the years and accommodate the people that are gonna be continuing to move in here, we have to continue with a program of every three years doing a mobility program. And and Brady has been advocating for parks for quite some time.
And Brady has been advocating for parks for quite some time, and I came on board whenever, you know, a lot of my constituents began to ask for parks, and we end up getting land donated to us, and so we have begun building more parks as we get more of our young kids out here. You know, we need more and more parks, and so that's obviously the second bond proposition we have on the ballot, thirty-eight million dollar park. Our two-hundred-and-eighteen-million-dollar mobility bond issue is important for the entire county, but it's very important for the area of like Precinct Three that is going so rapidly out here. The people that continue to move in, it takes so long to build a road. I'm finding out that, for at least my area up here, probably the longest lead time is on buying the right-of-way. It's getting so time-consuming and so expensive to buy right-of-way, we've got to start, you know, I'm gonna have to get some preliminary design and right-of-way identified, so we can start the process early enough so that I got the right-of-way and the utilities moved, it's time I want to build a road. It's now taking me two and three years to simply do nothing but buy a right-of-way, which is kind of ridiculous, but that's the reality we face. So we've got to, you know, we've got to deal with what we have. We've been very fortunate. Our voters have recognized the need for mobility, and all of our mobility bond issues in the past have passed seventy-plus percent. I anticipate this one gonna pass again. Whether it's seventy-plus percent or not, I don't know, but I recently expected it's gonna pass. Most people are, see the need for mobility improvements and recognize that as we continue to grow, we've got to have more roads. And so, we think we're gonna, you know, we obviously are doing our part to try to make people aware that we have a bond issue, that you have to go all the way down to the bottom of the ballot to vote for it. That's the key thing. The election coming up is gonna be very confusing to a whole lot of people. We've got brand-new equipment that they're voting on, and then you're, you've got the federal, the state, the, you know, the county, the local, the school district, the special purpose districts, and a whole bunch of propositions on the ballot, including a couple of, several bond proposition that people are gonna have to be voting for. And so I've got a little anxiety about that. We're trying to educate as many of the people as we can about the fact that you've got, you know, you've got some things that are gonna be different than you've had in the past. It can be some rather long lines. I know that the court just approved extending the voting time in the last three days of early voting to nine o'clock, to try to make certain we accommodate people and allow, you know, we want everybody to be able to vote, that want to vote, that intend to vote. And, you know, with accommodation of, you got social distancing, and, but more importantly, you got such a long ballot on new equipment, it's gonna take people a lot more time to figure out how to utilize the equipment, and then a long time to read that very long ballot. So, I've got a little concern about that. But I think at the end of the day, the bond issue, mobility is very much needed. I think the bond issue passes.
Commissioner Press says, you have any thoughts on infrastructure equity? I mean, we can keep it brief.
We have equity because, because we have a seat at the table. And so, you know, I can just say that it's not a snapshot. It's a continuum, you know, it's changing. So, you know, if you have four commissioners, and everybody has their own individual areas, then you've got a reality that if you want the county overall to support something, it can't be one-sided. You've got to have something in it for everyone. So I think that the process yields some equity, okay? And there have been, there have been cycles where I had a lot of projects, and cycles where I have a few. This is one where I don't have as many, and a lot of my work is funding projects that are already designed. Okay, so, you know, it's just, it's just, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. So, so as long as I'm at the table, I'm gonna do my best to get equity, not just for my area, but look at what it does to the overall mobility in the county, because, you know, congestion is universal. So, and that's the short answer, that's about the shortest answer I can give you on that. I think we have, we have equity, and as long as we have representative government, you know, where people have single-member districts, they're gonna look to make sure that the resources are balanced throughout the county.
Do you want to share any quick thoughts on your 2020 mobility?
No, it's, I'm taking one for the team this year. I don't have a lot of projects. I got projects, but I recognize, like Commissioner Myers says, that we have to be in this game on a regular basis, and we had to make sure that we do things for the greater good. And so I didn't put a lot of projects out this time, because we were reaching our capacity to issue debt. And so I took one for the team this time, and the next time, I'll try to make up for it.
Last question, it wraps into this, into the subject matter, because they're gaining popularity, and Fort Bend County, in your precinct, Commissioner Myers, you've got one, which is a device or a design concept that's there to help improve intersection interchanges, and that is the roundabout. So, what are y'all's thoughts about those? How do y'all like them? You think they're effective? Would you like to see those gain, gain in popularity throughout the county as you do new road projects?
Since, I guess, we pioneered them out in Fort Bend County, I'll take the question. When we first kind of encountered them, I have to be brutally honest about the fact that I had some concerns about them. My biggest concern really related to the, you know, the eighteen-wheelers going around those things, you know? How are they going to get around that roundabout? I mean, if I'm, you know, a truck driver driving a big eighteen-wheeler, and I come up on a roundabout, and it's, you know, it's not, it's not real large, it's a little bit of a challenge to negotiate it. So, I had a lot of heartburn, a lot of concern over whether or not all the eighteen-wheelers that were gonna, that are delivering, you know, their grocery goods or whatever products they are. You know, we got Amazon that is now, have completed a big facility just north of Fort Bend County, and actually, it's Waller County, but it's, they're coming, they're now coming down my wonderful Kane Island Parkway, which is adding to some of the congestion. We have a big, but, you know, I have found, and I've driven through the roundabouts in my precinct quite a bit, actually, once you get used to them, once you understand how to navigate them, they actually move the traffic a lot faster than the stop sign or a signal. And so from that standpoint, they move the traffic a lot more efficiently, and I haven't, you know, we really haven't experienced a lot of accidents. We had some instances where people assume that you, if you want to, if you want to go left, you actually start left whenever you go right, 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 right. So that was a little bit of a challenge at first, but once people turn left and they were headed into head-on traffic, they learned very quickly that's a really dumb idea. I mean, it's working. So, I have to be, I was a skeptic at first, even the big trucks are making it around there, okay? So I think that they're working very well, and I anticipate we're gonna be, we're building a whole lot of them on the Texas Heritage Parkway. There's a bunch of them that's going in there. We've got six or eight of them. Now, we have some developers that are not very excited about them, because there's no signal or stop sign to stop them so that they can turn into their retail establishment, so they're not very happy about some of them. And we have some ongoing debates and discussions about that. But as far as moving traffic is concerned, I think it does a good job. Now, I think we need to accommodate some of the commercial establishments out there by putting some signals in that do allow for people to get into their, into their centers, because it's kind of hard to have a, come off of a roundabout into a shopping center in particular, so it's a little bit of a challenge there. But outside of that, I think the roundabouts, the Well and Spring Green, has been working fine now for several years.
Yeah, I want to make a comment about that. I think that they'll be a central part of our transportation grid. But I can recall when I think the county didn't have any signal lights that we operated, you know, that, you just didn't have any. And so when I got here, I don't think we had any at all.
We didn't have any. I built the first one at Sincco Ranch Boulevard and Mason Road.
Right, right.
In the county.
That's what I'm saying. So, you know, we've come a long way, okay? And I think roundabouts, sometimes even pedestrian tunnels or pedestrian bridges, a lot of things that, just like toll roads, all those things are kind of new and innovative, and they're gonna be a central part of the transportation grid moving into the future. Roundabouts are just another thing. They're good in some places, in some places, they just don't work, because there's not enough right-of-way.
Right.
Your metrics don't really work out, but when they're well-placed, I think they're an attractive feature, and I think that we see a lot of them as we continue to develop.
Yeah, no, there's, there's no question, there's a place for them all. I do believe that when that's appropriate at a four-way intersection, it does move them very efficiently. And I think on the Texas Heritage Parkway, they mastered that design and twisted it just a little bit so that people do follow that natural progression of going right versus trying to take a left. It's a little harder to take a left on that than it isn't. Some of these others, we've got one out here by where our new office is located, and I've been into almost two head-on collisions, because as I'm coming around, someone's going left, and it's got something, a big tree in the middle, and it blocks your view. So it's, you know, some people don't necessarily get them, but I think they're pretty effective. So, but we've enjoyed the great conversation today. We truly appreciate you both taking time out of your busy, busy schedules to join us, and we look forward to sharing this with y'all, so that we can, everyone can get some great insight and information about what's going on in Fort Bend County with two of the most tenured leaders there in Fort Bend County. So, to the Ground Down listeners, please keep an eye out for future podcast discussions with regional influencers, elected officials and their teams and organizations or clients and friends. So thank you again for joining us today. Again, commissioners, thank y'all again for being our guests. It's been an honor and a privilege, and everyone, please have a wonderful evening, stay healthy, and we look forward to seeing you again soon. So, that wraps up today's podcast.
We hope that you have enjoyed today's episode. If you would like to hear more episodes of The Ground Down, please visit www.ehraiinc.com for updates. Make sure to check out E H R Engineering on LinkedIn, Facebook, and YouTube for all kinds of cool content.